Good evening. It is now 7:00 PM and I call our regular Talmage City Council 7:00 PM meeting, May 23rd, 2024 to order. Please note tonight, we do have an executive session this evening prior to adjournment. Move on to item two, opening prayer. I will now ask Pastor James Case from Talmage Lutheran Church to please say prayer this evening.
If you will, please, let's bow our heads. Gracious Lord, it's a new day and we're here to serve you and the people of Talmage, Ohio. We pray that you'll be with our mayor, the directors, the council, and all people who enfold upon a group of one, serving you and serving those that you love. Please bless this meeting. All the decisions that were made are made through you and because of you. Let us grow in faith. In your name we pray. Amen.
Thank you. Moving into Pledge of Allegiance of Mayor Kilway.
To the land of the United States of America.
And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, we'll move on to roll call. Clerk, please call the roll this evening.
Jonathan Bolus.
Here.
Adam Bozick.
Mr. Bozick is excused this evening.
Jessica Epstein.
Here.
Mary Gutman.
Here.
Donald Pavlik.
Here.
Ted Roy.
Here.
Nick Rubino.
Here.
All right. We have six council members present this evening. Moving along to correcting and adopting the previous meeting minutes from May 9th, 2024 at the regular meeting. Do I have a motion to accept the meeting minutes or any corrections?
I make a motion to approve the minutes as is.
I'll second the motion.
All right. We have a motion in a second to accept the meeting minutes as presented. Any discussion? All right. Clerk, please call the roll.
Jessica Epstein.
Yes.
Mary Gutman.
Yes.
Donald Pavlik.
Yes.
Ted Roy.
Yes.
Nick Rubino.
Yes.
Jonathan Bolus.
Yes. All right. The meeting minutes from May 9th, 2024 have been adopted by a vote of six to zero. Next, we move on to financial reports. We have no financial reports this evening. Moving on to public hearings, we have no public hearings this evening as well. Next item on the agenda, community input. So this is the part of the meeting where if anyone present has, in the audience here, has anything to ask of council members that is not on the agenda, to please come forward. So I'll ask again if there's anyone wishing to speak this evening on an item that's not on the agenda. Hi. Please state your name and address.
Marie Lavender, 283 Green Hill Drive, Talmage.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I kind of came on behalf of the neighborhood and I just wanted to find out information on Talmage's leash laws and how they're enforced. We've had four dog attacks. Well, actually, I take that back. We've had three dog attacks and a child was the last one. We've reached out for assistance, but the community has not found out any information on what has taken place as far as any, I don't want to say discipline, but there hasn't been any results, obviously, because this started in April and the last attack that I'm aware of was between like the 13th and 14th of this month. But the dogs are pretty, it's a severe, they're severe attacks and they're out of the owner's yard. And the first attack was three dogs on one and the other three have been just one canine. But there's a lot of us, I walk at night, I walk really early in the morning. I'm not able to lift my dog. We have some people that are elderly or maybe have somewhat of a disability. And so people are carrying mace and sticks and, you know, we don't want to have to do that in our small area. We have over 35 homes with dogs and we just would like to get some support. The neighbors have reported to the police after the second attack to find out what we should do as the neighborhood and they were basically told that we need to take a picture of the dog off-leash in another yard. But this is happening when the other dogs are either in their yard, on leash, or when they're being walked. And, you know, it's a little kind of hard to juggle a phone when you're trying to protect your pet or two kids were involved that were walking the dogs as far as college students. So they're not going to be thinking about taking a photo. So I don't know if you guys have heard it. I've tried to reach out through text on the 14th. We were told that some information may have been given to the mayor around the 13th at an event or something. Again, that wasn't something directly from me, but we just would like to get some attention on this matter.
Yes, I did have a conversation with one of your neighbors and he did inform me of everything that had happened. We have been, I've been in contact with our police chief and they do have all of the events looped together and there's a directive to keep an eye on it too. But as I think you were told, if you see these dogs off-leash, please let our police department know so that they can come out. It's, it's kind of a hard thing, you know, if they get a phone call the day after it happens.
Correct.
So as soon as you see it happening, please call our police department. You can call the non-emergency number or even you can just call 911 to dispatch as well too and let us know when the dogs are out. They are going to be increasing patrols in the area as well too.
Okay. So, I mean, is that something too that we need to be aware of, taking photos then? If we're able to do so?
If you're able to, yes, that would be great too.
Okay. Okay. Yes.
I got a question. Ms. Lavender, is it the same dog?
Um.
Or a dog or was it multiple dogs?
Uh, the first attack was three dogs from one residence and then one of those dogs for the other three. So it's the same residence for all three dogs.
Ms. Raiber, can a, can a letter be sent to the homeowner?
Yes, I, I don't know what the status of this particular matter is, so I can look into it.
Okay. Thanks.
Thank you very much for coming in this evening and we will be looking into it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next up on the agenda, or let me pause for just a moment. Anyone else from the audience would like to speak on an item not on the agenda before we move on? All right. Moving on to agenda additions this evening, we have a presentation of a certificate of appreciation to George P. Matthews by Councilman Pavlik.
Back in January, when President Counsel, President of Counsel Adam Bozick asked us, council members, to recognize a community member, I immediately thought of George Matthews. George resides in Talmage and I can give you his address, but you would shrug your shoulders and say, I know about where he lives or I know what development he lives, but I wouldn't know the exact house. But if I would tell you that it's the house with the Christmas lights, you would say, yes, I know exactly where that house is. I happen to live across the street from George. Lots of people set up Christmas lights. I myself will dabble in setting up lights on the shrubs in the front yard and my wife will hang reefs, just like a lot of people do. We start that process in early December or when weather will allow for it. George, on the other hand, begins his Christmas setup in July. Let me repeat that. He begins his Christmas setup in July. He truly brings the phrase "Christmas in July" to life. In July, George is in his basement tinkering with his computer software, making sure the music syncs with the light display. He runs multiple computer programs, each handling a zone of his light display. In early October, you'll find him out in the yard with his car door opening, listening to a college football game on Saturday or unfortunately, listening to a Steeler football game on Sunday, setting the lights in the houses, in the house, in the trees and all over the yard. From sunup to sundown, he's out there weekend after weekend, leaning up to Thanksgiving where he hopes to flip the switch, weather permitting. During COVID, when we were kept from celebrating with family members, people would line the streets of Bentley Place as a way to get away from seeing, to get away from seeing something special. In 2020 and 2021, people would drive for miles to see the lights. It was common to average anywhere from 50 to 60 cars a night strolling through the neighborhood and on weekends, sometimes close to 100 cars. When there was snow, it only added to the breathtaking beauty, is a way for them to escape what become the new normal, a way to celebrate the holiday season when they couldn't be with loved ones. The lights became an annual ritual for parents with young kids as they stopped to drop a letter in Santa's mailbox or saw Santa dancing in the window. A father of a young family in Talmage told me, he takes his kids on average 15 times a year to see the lights. He also said, and I quote, "Who am I kidding? I enjoy the lights as well." Even adults find the beauty and magic captivating, the holiday spirit. Then one year, poof, it was gone. That was 2022. No cars, no visitors. It was eerily quiet. Social media attempted their explanation. He moved away. It was the HOA's fault. It was even the city's fault. People complained and tried to wrestle with the logic of the lights, having been there for almost 10 years, where suddenly they were gone. The overall sentiment though, was people missed George's lights display and hoped one day it would be back. After commenting on some of the awkward theories as to why the lights were gone, I ran into George on a late fall day in 2022. I asked him if he could put something up merely to prove that it was not the HOA or the city's doing. I even offered to help along with some of the other neighbors. That's when he explained to me the long and tedious process, starting in July and working about every weekend until Thanksgiving. I explained to him that the neighborhood was just too quiet. It wasn't the same. Other neighbors and myself actually missed the traffic and seeing the cars line up to the entrance to see the lights. We truly missed the magical spirit it brought. After a few days passed, George did reach out to me. He said my comments along with the over-outpouring support from social media, not all comments are bad, got him reinvigorated and bringing back the light display. He took to social media and said, expect something bigger and better in 2023. And let me tell you, he fulfilled that promise. The cars came back, the traffic came back, the magical spirit of the Christmas season came back as well. They say you never appreciate something until it's gone. When the lights left, it felt that the Christmas spirit was gone as well. George, I want to personally thank you for your time, talent and treasure, for making your light display one of the best, not only one of the best in Talmage, but one of the best in Northeast Ohio. Your dedication and commitment offer so much joy and happiness to the families of little ones and yes, even adults. I know this is something special. You hold near and dear to your heart and we are grateful to have you a resident in this wonderful city. With that, I offer you the certificate of appreciation for your outstanding commitment and dedication to the city of Talmage. Thank you.
Absolutely. Good evening, everybody. I appreciate the invite tonight and the very kind comments. Thank you, Don. Elizabeth and myself have been doing this, as Don said, for, it's been 10 years. Actually, it's been 20 years of doing Christmas lights at my previous house that I started doing with my son and he still continues to help us when he can. He's a new father, so we'll start the cycle all again. But yeah, we were very happy to bring the Christmas lights back this year and we hope everybody enjoyed it. I think we enjoy it probably more, if not more than everybody else, not only getting to see it, but as you talked about, just all the different people that come by and we get to meet from, you know, adults to children to special need people to, just so many people that we've, you know, come by over the years, you know, over 10 years. It's been a lot. Don, you said 100 cars and it's more like 100 cars every 15 minutes. I have a clicker, so that's on the weekdays, on the weekends. So anyways, not to be specific, but, and actually, that's probably another thing I should probably say, I appreciate the, you know, the neighborhood's, you know, help in, not only, you know, setting the lights up at times, helping taking them down and really just dealing with all the traffic and, you know, some of the stuff that comes with it. So, you know, like, like Don said, when we quit doing it, you know, we thought it was going to alleviate some other issues with some neighbors, but actually, the bigger picture at the end of the day was all the people that really were supportive and really wanted the lights and we're glad we brought them back and we'll continue to put them up and, you know, do it as long as I'm physically capable, because, you know, as you said, it takes, takes weeks, months. I'm almost done taking them down from last year. I think I should be done here in the next couple of weeks, so.
I'll go right back.
So, so there's, there's like two months and everyone asks, why don't I leave them up? The sun kills them, the animals get them and I've tried. It doesn't, it doesn't work out. Otherwise, I would, so. But anyways, thank you so much. I appreciate it and, you know, we look forward to, you know, enjoying it with your families for, for years to come. Thanks.
All right. Thanks so much.
Thanks. Appreciate it. You got it.
George.
Picture?
Sure.
Absolutely. Yes. Thanks, George.
Thanks, Elizabeth.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you for that. Next, we'll move on to reports of administrative officers. First up, Mayor Kilway, Mayor and Director of Economic Development.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Bolus. I'd like to thank Mr. Matthews and his family that just walked out for, for the wonderful display of lights that we all get to enjoy every year. So thank you very much for that. I also want to congratulate, there's several of our Talmage High School track athletes that have qualified to go to states this next weekend, so congratulations to them for that. Also, I had my after hours with the mayor today and we did have some community members that came to speak with me. It's always great to hear from them and to hear their concerns and just to meet people in the city, so I thank them for coming. On the economic development side, we're continuing to do business retention meetings and going out and visiting the area businesses. I was honored to be able, as being a board member of the Portage Development Board, I was able to go to their Locate, Stay and Grow Awards this last week. And we did have some Talmage business that received a Grow Award and we also had another business in the JED that received another award. Their, their business is in the JED, but they're Talmage residents, so that was very nice to see that two out of the 15 businesses were here in Talmage. Also, just a quick little update from Portage County and the JED. I know the council always is wondering what's going on. I had reported previously that there's a VA project that's going to be going in that is still on track, just letting you guys know. And Jack's Pizza did open up over in the Cascade area, over where the barbecue place used to be. McApul is going to be open this Friday for members only from 4 till 8 o'clock, so that's the first opening. And then the season starts on Saturday, on this Saturday, the 20th, May the 25th. We're still working with the wheelchair basketball state champions to get them in here for council to do their resolution. And Memorial Day is on Monday, just a reminder to council. Step Off is at 10 o'clock, so please be at the church across the street prior to that if you want to walk with administration. Oh, it's at the Y, not the Y, the hole. At the hole, sorry.
Be there like around 9:40, 9:45?
9:45, yeah.
Got it. Thank you.
Okay. We are continuing to work on the Circle Festival and Light Parade, which again is August 10th. And I was also honored to be able to attend the 150th anniversary of the Akron Summit County Public Library, specifically our Talmage branch had a nice dinner last week and I was able to present them with a proclamation to celebrate their sesquicentennial. I think I said it right. That's 150 years. I've been practicing that one, sorry. Also, I was able to accompany firefighter Sandy to some annual safety training over at 485 South Avenue. So it's just another great example of what our fire education and training does, is to help out seniors and make sure that they're able to do the right thing to put out fires and if there's an alarm and so forth, what to do. Last week, our Talmage High School seniors did have their community give back day, so they came and met at Memorial Park and then split up into groups and helped our city out and they helped do some, they weren't able to do painting, but they were able to help with a lot of park improvements and cleaning and cemetery also. And then I was able to join our superintendent, Steve Wood, at the MEC to watch and congratulate the seniors during their senior graduation parade and that was really fun to see. The rest of the captives or the students are going to be released for summer tomorrow is the last day of school. And I also want to thank the Talmage Lutheran Church for the annual City of Talmage Employee Appreciation Luncheon. That was last weekend. I hope you were all able to attend and enjoy that as well. Unfortunately, I was not able to attend it because I did do some training, some new mayor's training. And part of that training, I did realize what a wonderful situation we are in here in Talmage with the civility that we have and with the amazing team that was put together by the former mayors to, to do the work here in Talmage. I'm very blessed to walk into this situation, so I want to again thank Mayor Klein for all that he has done for our city. And then the only other thing I do have is we would be asking for first reading adoption of ordinance 2024-43 and we'll get into that when that comes up on the agenda. Any questions?
All right. Thank you, Mayor Kilway.
Thank you.
All right. Next up, Director of Administration.
Good evening, Councilman Bolus, fellow council members of administration, Mayor, Director Raiber, Finance Director Gilbreit, fellow members of the administration, most importantly, members of the community who proudly call Talmage home. It's a great honor to be back in the city, working again. My wife Karen and I were residents of Talmage for nine years in the past, in the past before I went on active duty in the Army and we're truly looking forward in the near future to moving back to the city and coming full circle. I look forward to collaborating with council, the mayor, fellow members in the administration, local businesses, civic organizations to enhance our community. Together, we can make Talmage an even better place to work, live and call home. As the mayor said, previous councils and administration have set us up on a fantastic path and what we'd like to do as we move forward, working with council is focus on economic development, improving city services, enhancing the quality of life, improving both internal and external communications and being fiscally responsible stewards of the taxpayers' money. Reflecting on the remarkable accomplishments of the last 20 years, I'm eager to move forward together with this community. This is indeed an exciting time to live in this community and be a part of this government. My nine years in the Pentagon tackling complex issues have underscored the importance of teamwork, partnership and open communications. With these skills and working together as a team, I know we can move forward to advance the community and achieve our common goals. I'm excited about the mayor's initiative to develop a new strategic plan, actually the first strategic plan for the city that will guide us roughly from 2025 to 2030. We've begun initial discussions with potential organizations to partner with us and while we're still developing, who will help us with this, we know that it'll be created from input from our council members, from our residents, business leaders, civic leaders, city employees, and bringing the whole community together with representatives of those, those groups. During our discussions with these potential organizations, we have heavily emphasized the importance of collaboration is key to success. And when I say collaboration, it's bringing all those people together to look at where we're currently at and collectively determine where we want to take the city in the future and move it to the next level. As Mayor Kilway, Director of Administration, I look forward to working with all of you as we develop and implement this milestone in the first strategic plan. This past week, we also began exploratory discussions with potential organizations for grant assistance opportunities. The intent is to maximize the city's potential to gain additional grants. The goal is to select a team that can work with the city departments, administration, our economic development partner Insight, with a common goal of finding grant opportunities and in developing the grant applications. This is a long process and I would just caution everyone, sometimes grants you might get quick, but as we all know, especially with East Avenue paving, you might get it and it's going to be four years before you get that. But more to follow on all these, all these topics. It's really an exciting time to be here and to be back. Thank you again and I look forward to be part of history moving forward.
Thank you very much. All right. Next up, Director of Public Service.
Good evening. Just two quick slides. See if you could pull that up. Just so everybody knows, as the mayor brought up, Monday is Memorial Day. That is the parade route there, so it goes from Mac Burleson or the hole down West Avenue, actually goes clockwise around the circle to Southwest Avenue and ends at the cemetery. So pick your, pick your seats, rain or shine, there is no rain out, so this will occur whether it's raining or not. So also, ordinance 2024-42, this is an MOU with the county. Remember, last year, we ran conduit and fiber from Britton Road through Thomas Commerce, up West Avenue, Nottingham, Overdale, up Kent, Allendale, to Howe, to, I think I got all that, to the Dispatch Center and we ran an extra conduit for our purposes. As we were doing so, we were supposed to get an additional, 24 additional vaults that were supposed to be ours. As you can tell, the right of way throughout the neighborhoods is very narrow, so we've shared the vaults. The county has their conduit running in that vault and we have our conduit running into that vault. So what this MOU does is allow us to share access to those vaults. So, just so you know what that ordinance is about. And you can see there, both those pictures, where am I going to put the other, the other vault? I'm out of room. So instead of hogging up more real estate off of the residents, we just decided just to share the vaults. And that's it for my report. Any questions? Anything? Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Rourke. Next up, Director of Finance.
Thank you. We are in the process, the auditors have been in for several months. We should be through the process of wrapping up the audit here in the next few weeks. I say that because you could receive additional communication prior to the next council meeting. So if anybody has any questions about the audit or how that happens, you can feel free to contact me or the auditors. They will also send out information and if you have questions on that, you can ask as well. That's all I have this evening and I'll answer any questions if anybody has any.
All right. Thank you very much. Next up, Director of Law.
Thank you. I just wanted to thank those members of council who were able to participate in the webinar that we had the other day with regard to adult use cannabis. For those of you who haven't been able to do that, they, they did actually end up providing a link, so I would ask that you take an opportunity to review that information if possible and also the website that I sent. You do have a for you tonight for first reading, a new ordinance that would be to extend the moratorium. That moratorium expires on July 25th and those regulations are just kind of finishing being promulgated. They are going to be effective, they anticipate effective dates in June, so we're kind of in that mid-cycle and what I didn't want to do is not go ahead and start this conversation. And so just because we do the extension of the moratorium does not mean that we cannot continue to have discussions as to what direction the city wants to go on that. And I actually encourage you to do that. As we have the discussions with regard to this ordinance, I encourage you to get feedback, solicit feedback and I'm hoping that the residents will participate as well so that we can really start to formulate which direction we want to go and we can talk about it a little bit more once we get to that ordinance as well, but that's an issue that we need to be actively looking at.
Thank you very much. Any other questions for, for the administration from council? All right. Moving on to reports of standing committees of council of the whole. First up is our Planning and Zoning Committee chaired by Mary Gutman.
Thank you, Mr. Bolus. I'll call Planning and Zoning to order. This evening, we have nothing before us. Does anyone have anything for Planning and Zoning? Okay then, seeing nothing, I'll close committee.
All right. Thank you very much. All right. Next up, we have our Finance Committee. Mr. Pavlik, Chair, would you like to open committee?
Yes. The Finance Committee deals
And so just because we do the extension of the moratorium does not mean that we cannot continue to have discussions as to what direction the city wants to go on that, and I actually encourage you to do that. As we have the discussions with regard to this ordinance, I encourage you to get feedback, solicit feedback, and I'm hoping that the residents will participate as well so that we can really start to formulate which direction we want to go, and we can talk about it a little bit more once we get to that ordinance as well. But that's an issue that we need to be actively looking at.
Thank you very much. Any other questions for the administration from council? All right. Moving on to reports of standing committees, of council, of the whole. First up is our Planning and Zoning Committee chaired by Mary Gutman.
Thank you, Mr. Bullis. I'll call Planning and Zoning to order. This evening, we have nothing before us. Does anyone have anything for Planning and Zoning? Okay, then, seeing nothing, I'll close committee.
All right. Thank you very much. All right. Next up, we have our Finance Committee. Mr. Pavlik, Chair, would you like to open committee?
Yes. The Finance Committee deals with budget appropriations, reappropriations, bonds, franchises, investments, and expenditures. We have three ordinance, two ordinances tonight. One is in third reading and one's in first reading. The first ordinance, actually, three ordinances, excuse me. First ordinance is ordinance 2024-36, Exhibit A dash Exhibit A Tracted, Amending Ordinance 109-2021, Rates, Changes, and Fees for the Zoning Department and Providing for Immediate Enactment. Sponsor of this ordinance is Director of Public Service, Mr. Rohr. Mr. Rohr, would you have any comments, questions, or anything?
Unless there's any questions from council, we've gone over that this third time, so it's pretty simple.
I would make a motion to adopt this ordinance.
Thank you. Is there a second? Madam Clerk, if you please call the roll.
Jessica Epstein.
Yes.
Mary Gutman.
Yes.
Donald Pavlik.
Yes.
Ted Roy.
Yes.
Nick Rubino.
Yes.
Jonathan Bullis.
Yes.
Okay. With that, the ordinance passes at a vote of six to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up in third reading is ordinance 2024-37, Authorizing the Director of Public Service to Advertise for Bids and the Mayor to Enter into a Contract for Miscellaneous Repairs and Remodeling of Fire Station 1 at 85 West Overdale Drive and Providing for Immediate Enactment. Sponsor of this ordinance is Director of Public Service, Mr. Rohr. Mr. Rohr, any information you'd like to divulge on this?
Yes. So myself and the fire department are still working on the specs. There again, keeps coming up on the front burner, and then it drops down to the back burner. So it's just one of those things that just hasn't really been able to focus on. Hopefully, in the next two weeks, we can pull it together and get this thing out to bid.
Ms. Raiber, is this, we can leave this at third reading until the next meeting? Okay. Is there any comments or questions from council? Okay, hearing none, we will go on to the next ordinance, which is in first reading. Ordinance 2024-43, Authorizing the Mayor to Apply for and Accept if Rewarded the Hazardous Materials Training Grant through the Ohio Public Utilities Commission and Providing for Immediate Enactment. Sponsor of this ordinance is Mayor Kilway. This ordinance has been read into the record. Mayor Kilway, any comments?
Yes, this is a PU, this is to apply for a PUCO grant to host a three-day lithium battery and EV emergency training class, and this is something that our fire department would like to do. There is a timeline on when they can apply for this and get the grant, so I would just ask for first reading adoption on this. So it would pay for the grant of up to $8,625. And it's reimbursement, so we would have to pay for it first, and then the grant would reimburse it. But this is just to apply for the grant.
Okay. Is there any questions from council?
I would move to adopt ordinance 2024-43 at first reading.
Thank you, Ms. Gutman.
Second.
Ms. Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Mary Gutman.
Yes.
Donald Pavlik.
Yes.
Ted Roy.
Yes.
Nick Rubino.
Yes.
Jonathan Bullis.
Yes.
Jessica Epstein.
Yes.
Okay. With that, ordinance 2024-43 has been approved at a vote of six to zero.
Thank you very much.
With that, that is all the readings unless anybody else has anything to bring to Finance Committee. If not, I will close Finance Committee. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up, we will move on to Personnel Committee. Just a point of order question, am I able to chair this committee?
I think if we want to be very technical, then you can defer to Mr. Pavlik since you're chairing the meeting instead.
Okay. All right. Mr. Pavlik, you want to run Personnel Committee this evening?
Sure. The Personnel Committee deals with personnel, labor relations, insurance claims, rules of council, and state statutes. There is no ordinances or resolutions being brought before Personnel Committee. Is there any questions or comments on Personnel Committee?
I had one. Mr. Rohr, how are we doing on lifeguards this season?
We are fully staffed, and we're looking for additional lifeguards in case people call off, so.
Okay. All right. Sounds good.
Thank you. Is there any other questions or comments? Hearing none, I will close Personnel Committee. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Moving on to Safety Committee, Mr. Rubino.
Thank you. The Safety Committee deals with disaster services, communications, fire, and paramedics, police, and health. We currently have no legislation before us this evening. Does anybody have anything for the Safety Committee? Hearing none, I close committee.
All right. Thank you very much. Next up, we will move to Community Issues Committee. Mr. Roy, Chair?
Yeah. The Community Issue Committee deals with parks and recreation, civic affairs, and liaison between council and the Recreation Board, and intergovernmental affairs. Tonight, we have one reading, ordinance 2024-44, public hearing on June 27, 2024 at 7:05, extending the moratorium on acceptance of any zoning application for an adult-use cannabis operator and providing for immediate enactment. This is sponsored by the mayor. Or maybe the law director would like to handle that one?
Sure. So again, as I mentioned earlier in the meeting, the moratorium that was put in place following, earlier, it was actually earlier this year, following the adoption of the state constitutional amendment, is going to expire on July 25. We were kind of waiting to see what the regulations would be and kind of get some more information. The regulations are just coming out now. We need some time to analyze that. We need some time to put together a plan. We need time to solicit information from our residents now that we have more of a structure around what that's going to mean and what it's going to look like. So what I would suggest is that we continue to move forward with this ordinance that would continue a moratorium for six months, but in the process of looking at this ordinance, we solicit input from our residents. We ask them to come in, and so I'm asking the residents to come in to talk on this matter as we're looking at this subject as to just which direction we want to go. And again, this is only as it pertains to zoning, which is carved out in the constitutional amendment to be allowed to be selected by the municipality, so we can decide whether we want, the word operator includes cultivators, processors, and distributors. So those are the three kind of areas. So we can also decide the number of each of those, or we can say none of those. So again, all of those things are up to council ultimately to decide, and if we, we need to know which direction to go before we, so we can draft an ordinance that would then come before you for an official vote, but kind of need to know which way we want to take it, so.
Lord, Dr. Raiber. Go ahead.
Oh, I was just going to ask clarification, that the public hearing has been set already? Or are we setting it tonight?
You'll set it tonight, so you need to read it into record and set it tonight officially.
Okay. Go ahead.
We have two establishments that are quote-unquote grandfathered in, correct? Or no?
No. We have no, we have no marijuana or cannabis.
Okay.
We have no medical marijuana permitted.
Got, okay. All right.
Yeah. So we are, we are a municipality that, we currently have a prohibition on medical marijuana facilities and operators in our, in our city.
Okay.
So that's the other piece of this, is if we decided to permit adult recreational use, adult-use cannabis, I would suggest that we also take a look at the medical marijuana side of it and do, if we made a change to permit it, we need to at least take a look at that and maybe, you know, take a look at whether we would permit the medical marijuana as well. So again, these are changes that we need, then if we are looking at permitting it, where would we want to permit them? How would we want to permit them? All those sorts of things. So that's, that's a longer process and a little bit more in-depth. If, if you all are leaning towards not permitting them, then that is probably a quicker path, but either way, we need a little bit more time to do this, and so I would suggest that you can pass the moratorium and then still be working towards moving one direction or the other with regard to ultimate, the ultimate decision. And I would highly suggest that, you know, after this, we, there'd not be any other additional extensions unless it's really an extreme situation, but I don't, right now, I don't foresee that, so I would suggest that we need to get this done.
It, it also sounded like from the webinar that the state wasn't giving any licenses for a cultivator?
What they said was that it'll be about a two-year window before they begin to do any licensing for new cultivators or processors. Right now, they're only issuing additional licenses, new licenses for dispensaries. So however, I think while we're addressing the subject, we should address and contemplate all three. So while we don't anticipate this year that there's, there's going to, you know, even in the next two years, that there's going to be any new processors or distributors, again, if you, or I'm sorry, processors or cultivators, if that is something that we would want to do, I think you kind of look at it all as a total package and decide which of those things we would or would not want in our, in our city.
Thank you.
Does that make sense to everybody?
We have any other discussion? Do I have a motion?
No motion, just first reading.
First reading, sorry.
And just, we need to set the public hearing, please. So you just announced that there's going to be a public, we're going to set the public hearing.
Okay. So the public hearing will be on June 27, 2024 at 7:05. And do we have any other additional items? If not, I'll close Community Issues.
All right. Thank you very much. Next, we'll move on to Public Service Committee. That's chaired by Ms. Epstein.
Thank you. I call Public Service Committee to order. The Public Service Committee deals with streets, highways, sidewalks, buildings, and improvements, water, sewer, electricity, gas, energy resources, recycling, waste, and trash. We have one ordinance before us this evening, ordinance number 2024-42, Exhibit A, authorizing the mayor to enter into an intergovernmental agreement between the County of Summit and the City of Talmage for maintenance of vaults and co-located fiber-optic cables, juvenile court to PSAP run, and providing for immediate enactment. The sponsor is Mayor Kilway. Do you have anything that you'd like to add to this?
I don't have anything to add. I know Sir Restructored Rohr gave a little bit of an update, so I'll defer to him if he has any additional information, but, you know, I think this is something we need to get going on as soon as possible.
If there's any questions, I mean, there again, we eliminated our, our vaults and shared a vault throughout the, throughout the run through the city.
Are you looking for first reading adoption, then?
No. No, thank you.
Any discussion on this item? Okay. We will leave this at first reading. Are there any other items to come before Public Service tonight? Hearing none, I close committee.
All right. Thank you very much. Next up, we will move to reports of special committees. This is Council Operations Committee, which I am chair of. I have no additional items, other than we are still waiting for the implementation of the new microphone upgrades, so that'll be forthcoming. And then additional announcements, it is now 7:44 PM, and we will go into executive session for the purpose of discussing pending litigation. Can I please have a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second it.
We have a motion and a second to be excused to executive session at 7:44. Please call the roll clerk.
Donald Pavlik.
Yes.
Ted Roy.
Yes.
Nick Rubino.
Yes.
Jonathan Bullis.
Yes.
Jessica Epstein.
Yes.
Mary Gutman.
Yes.
All right. It is now 7:44 PM, and we will go into executive session. For those watching and in the audience, we will go into executive session, then we will return to council floor to finish off the meeting.
And we will not take any action following that. We will just come back to adjourn, so, just so people know.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.